We board, we have a call, we have four board members present in the building and we have our board president, Dr. Seback, present via phone and Vice President Hillier is absent. And board members, we have all had the opportunity to review the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by a board member, Figures, and second by McGuffey. That, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No nays being none, motion is approved. We've had the opportunity to review the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the August 6th, 2024 regular board member minutes?
Second.
And it's been moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. And now on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Good evening, board members. Good evening, team members, community members, all those who are joining us in the boardroom and those who will watch live stream. We'll begin, as we typically do, with some highlights from our instructional television team.
Welcome to the Jackson Middle College Open House.
Several JPS high school scholars gifted with math skills advanced to college level thanks to the Jackson Middle College and its partnership with JSU.
This evening is all about getting to know that our amazing program, meeting our wonderful teachers and professors, and discovering the opportunities that await here.
There's something about the education field that prepares people to go into the world with a little more confidence.
Joining the Middle College has been one of the hardest yet rewarding experiences of my life.
Each signs a contract with a commitment to return to JPS upon college graduation to become JPS math teachers.
Helping them with tutoring them in math, basically helping them with their weaknesses in math through the strengths that Jackson Public School and Jackson State provides us with as well.
We have some GED students coming over and our middle college students are working with them to help prepare them, help them build up the skills that they need to pass their GED test.
Setting our scholars on an exciting path towards higher education.
The Middle College program is an innovative pilot that's aimed to identify and nurture students with high mathematical aptitude.
It's a great experience to be able to be with my peers as a top of Jackson Public Schools to become math teachers at Jackson Public Schools.
I'm glad to be back and see all new people.
New backpacks and school supplies for all JPS scholars at Shirley Elementary School.
We select an elementary school to receive the backpacks that are filled with grade-specific school supplies and the whole goal is to remove any obstacle that would prevent a scholar from focusing on doing their absolute best.
A generous donation made possible by the Junior League of Jackson and their Backpack Buddies volunteers.
These people came and brought this backpack that God put them in their hearts to come and brought this backpack for us.
Cherry apple chicken, General T S O chicken, fried rice, egg rolls. You gotta love it.
As the new school year gets underway, so was the effort for preparing nutritious meals for JPS scholars.
Excited to announce a partnership with Walker Quality Services and their team of chefs to introduce new and fresh ideas for our scholars.
Today is going to show them how to eat fresh vegetables, vibrant colors, with the nutrients, showing a different culture in everyday school luncheon. We aim on creating healthy meals, appealing meals, so our students can eat and our interest should go up and everybody makes good grades.
Please visit our website at jackson.k12.ms.us. Follow us on Facebook, on Instagram, on Twitter, Comcast, channels 18 and 19, and YouTube at youtube.com/jpsitv.
As always, we'd like to thank the team for those wonderful highlights and just appreciate them for their work in keeping us updated on all the wonderful things happening throughout Jackson Public Schools. Board members, we have been in school for 12 days. And so if you know a teacher, or a principal, or librarian, or anybody who works in the school district, you make sure you hug them and encourage them to take naps when they go home and on weekends, as we're all building our stamina back up. But we have been in school for 12 days and we are off to an exceptional start. This positive start is a testament to our collective efforts and should reassure you of the direction that we're taking. As I've concluded, or as I approach the conclusion of the first round of school visits, and I do this every year, to get to all of our schools in the first few weeks of school, it's been nothing but magical. Just a wonderful opportunity to see all the hard work and planning and all the partnerships and the hiring and just all the things that we do to try to set ourselves up for success in the new year. And certainly, as we've launched our new strategic plan and the big focus on joy and people and creating amazing opportunities for folks to do their very best, whether they're educators and leaders, or our scholars, parents, partners, there again, you start to see some of the evidence of that in classrooms. People are working, teaching, leading, cleaning, doing their jobs as though their hair is on fire with a level of urgency that you just have to appreciate and applaud. These first couple of weeks of school have really been strong for us on so many fronts, and I'm just very pleased to be able to share that with you. We've, there's some wonderful pictures. There's some of these I haven't seen. Me being schooled on how to build a tower with this young man. We've seen, it's nice to see our curricular materials in use, day one, day two, day three, and on into the school year. Very clearly, teachers have worked together and planned collaboratively. You see the similarities from one sixth grade English Language Arts class to another sixth grade English Language Arts class within the building and across buildings. So you get the sense that the school district is moving together forward. And still, there's opportunity for our teachers to put their touches on the lessons and make them their own and bring their own style and personality into the classroom. And it's wonderful to see that as well. So joy abounds. You see it in so many ways and in so many places, and we're celebrating that. And I could literally spend the rest of this evening recounting signs and demonstrations of joy, but I want to just kind of lift up one in particular. So I had the chance to meet, yeah, I had a chance to meet a new teacher at Casey Elementary School. This teacher is Ms. McCollum. Ms. McCollum happens to be a 2019 graduate of Forest Hill High School. Y'all let that sink in. 2019 was the first graduating class that I was able to welcome across the stage at graduation. And so to have one of our graduates, Forest Hill High School alum, to come back, and this is someone who came up through our APEC program at Forest Hill, to come back and serve as an art teacher at Casey. When I tell you, joy abounds, joy abounds. And I'm told, though I've not yet seen them, that there's at least a handful of other new teachers who are JPS grads from the years that I've been here, the six years I've been here. So, you know, this is proof positive and our JPS vision in action, you know, where we talk about preparing scholars to achieve globally and to do what? To achieve globally and to do what? Contribute locally.
You're right.
And to be individually fulfilled. To contribute locally. That aspect of our vision is being brought to life and it's being embodied by some of these brand-new teachers who've decided to come right back here and give their talent and their time and treasures here with our scholars. So, again, we're off to a great start seeing this level of joy in our teachers and our leaders and all of the folks throughout the building, our cafeteria workers, people who very clearly are proud to be a part of Team JPS and are serving our scholars because they believe in them and believe in our system. This, board members, brings me joy. Lastly, you saw pieces of this in the highlights video, but the Child Nutrition Department has partnered with a professional chef to bring some and expose our scholars to some new culinary techniques, to different cultures through food, and of course, to some really tasty meals. And so we're excited to have launched publicly this new partnership on August the 8th, where scholars in our high schools across the district were treated to Asian-inspired meals with stir-fry and even some, what do you call it? What's the pastry? Egg rolls, thank you. I had it. Oh, it's right here. Right here. Egg rolls or fortune cookies, actually, is what I meant to say. Fortune cookies. All across our high schools. So this past Friday, they had a chicken wing, hot wing bar, where different types of hot wings were served. And I tell you, it was quiet in the cafeteria when I visited. I'm like, wait a minute, I thought we were so pressed to talk at lunch. No, it was quiet in that cafeteria. And I didn't see anything being thrown away, so I feel like we're on to something. But again, as we talk about joy and talk about all the ways that we're striving to engage our scholars, get them to come to school, to engage positively while at school and just all the things, this is just one more of those opportunities that we're taking full advantage of. I'm going to have our Executive Director of Child Nutrition, Mark Rowe, to join us now and provide just a little more detail about this wonderful partnership and program. Mr. Rowe, please join us.
Hello. Board President, Ms. Thomas, Superintendent Dr. Green, members of the board, team members, community members, greetings. Yes, we're very excited to announce the partnership with Walker Quality Services to bring about chef-inspired breakfast and lunches and themed meals from different cultures to help expose the students to different meals from different cultures. We have a really, really good start to the year, as Dr. Green said, mentioned. Probably about a 7% increase in students in high schools eating on those days. Spike in social media attention, real positive social media attention. But the best thing about it was joy. There was a lot of joy in the cafeteria that day. And so we're also excited about expanding this program into the middle schools and the elementary schools later on this fall.
Mr. Rowe, and so how frequently will scholars be able to experience this?
At least once a week to start, and as we expand, we'll expand more entrees. We'll spill over into breakfast entrees, but at least once a week to start.
Any questions for Mr. Rowe?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a simple one. Just can you give us some background on how this came about, how we got connected? And then I'm also interested in the chef's perception and experience in our schools and with the kids. And I imagine that's a different experience, right, than serving in a restaurant or something like that. So what are we hearing back from them?
So there, we met them at a national conference last year and started developing conversations about it. And they, they work with school districts throughout Texas. They're actually from Texas. And so we encouraged them to work with us over here in Mississippi. They were excited about it. It's a different, different culture here in Mississippi than it is in Texas, a different eating culture. But they were excited about the response that the students and the JPS community gave them on Asian Walk Day.
Any other questions for Mr. Rowe? Mr. Rowe, just want to thank you for your leadership and vision for this program and partnership. Excited that this is not just about different meals for our scholars, which in and of itself is a good thing, but also the exposure to and hopefully seeding some interest in culinary arts for our scholars. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, Mrs. Thompson, that concludes my remarks for the evening. I'll take any questions or comments that you all have.
Thank you, Dr. Green. That was very good. Board members, do you all have any other comments or remarks from the superintendent's report?
I've got a really sort of brief thing that I wanted to shout out. I mentioned this, Dr. Green, last week, that as a board member, I think my favorite thing, as much as I adore the people that I serve with, my favorite thing that I get to do is go into our schools. And so the school tours, I just partially, I want to extend a word of thanks to the principals, the teachers, all the staff members in the schools that sort of make space for us literally to invade their space at times, you know what I mean?
Right.
There are some, you know, a teacher is trying to teach a classroom and then walks like eight people, sort of line the wall to observe how this is going. It's a different deal. And so
And that we're not there.
Yeah, you just act like we're not here. We're just standing over your shoulder. It's fine. But, and so I just want to say sort of heartfelt thanks to those, to those teachers and principals and, like I said, the entire staffs that kind of make us, that kind of woke up us into those buildings. But also, you know, I just, I haven't had the opportunity to go into, I think my count was 16 or 18 of the schools and six out of the seven middle schools, and I really will try to get to the seventh this year at some point. But I just kind of wanted to reiterate what you said, and it's, there's a, there's just a sort of vibe and spirit to the start of the school year this year, even more so than last year. It feels like things are building. And so I just kind of want to, I wanted to take the time just to say, you know, the decorations across all the buildings, I got to see at least one school in every ward, and that was kind of fun to get to see, like you said, this consistency across all the, literally the entire city, you know, from going in with the littles at Van Winkle, middle schools across the district, everything like that. So there, if you really want to see like what people are capable of, wander in, you know, check in at the office first, but wander into one of our schools and you'll see all the, you know, if it's decorated like a jungle, or if it's decorated like a paintbrush or whatever, there's some really amazing stuff going on. And I do feel like there is, there was a joyful start, you know, and I'm appreciative of that personally because I had three kids that walked into that joy, right? So, so just, I don't have much other than to say thank you. Thanks across the district. It's been, it was a lot of fun to observe, so.
Thank you.
I want to just piggyback off of that and just, just say, I was just blown away that it was just the first and second week, the first few days of school, and so much teaching was already taking place and engagement and excitement even among the children that were already actively involved and seeming to be ready, just like ready, like I'm ready. I'm here and I'm ready to be involved. And I was, I can just, I was excited to see it. I was excited to see it happening and excited to see the, all of the adults receiving the children, you know, which is a good thing, that they were ready. So I just loved it. I loved the atmospheres of the buildings. Some of them, a little, had a little whatever, but for the most part, everything was really, really good, really good. And I just really appreciated that we were at, like he said, already at this earlier point, learning, working, and ready. And I feel like that means if we're right here already, we're only going to go up from here. So before the end of the school year, I believe we'll, we'll be where we need to be.
Indeed. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, board members, we're going to move on and we're going to, do we have any going for a public comment? No. Okay, so I'm going to read this anyway, community members. If you would like to make public comments, you could email your request to roswilliams@jackson.k12.ms, no later than 4:00 PM, the day of our board meetings, or appear in person in the boardroom, no later than 5:00 PM, the day of the meeting. Let's see. And next, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda. All right. And that is our ESTER III monthly update for June the 16th through July the 15th. And we have Mr. David Boone, the Triage Facility Consultants. All right.
Good evening. How's everyone doing?
Well.
All right, very good. All right, we're all elated to be here tonight and to share the updates. Again, this is from June 16th through July 15th, so you'll see some information. Keep in mind, it's a month behind, and we'll share some numbers to give you a current update on what the projects are. Okay? So we're going to cover projects, scheduling, and budget updates. We'll start with Beckham Park. So we are very, very excited that Beckham Park contracts were able to meet the deadline on July 15th for the interior. Students, scholars were able to get there, get the school year started, like an atmosphere that's conducive for learning. We're also excited about the progress that's going on with the exterior work and the site work. You see here, 75% where we were at that time, but we're currently right around 85%. So that includes 100% with the interior and the rest of the work is exterior. We're really excited about how that's going at Beckham Park. Our next project is Bailey APEC. You see here, the new roof, which is really important, it's in about the building envelope, it's been completed with the new air handler. You see there, the sheet rock and lights been installed, the change order is going into effect as far as the electrical updates, the plumbing updates, and we're very excited that things are going to get rolling soon with the interior work as well, with the painting and the updates. So you see where they're at, 64.5%. We're currently around 67% of our estimates as where the construction is there at Bailey APEC. Moving forward, Cap City, excited about this project because the restrooms, you see there, they might show ongoing progress. But as we say here today, those restrooms are done. They're currently installing rooftop units in this project. Not only is it on schedule, but it is ahead of progress. So we're currently standing there at Cap City, a little bit about 50% according to the most recent payout. Package A, really excited to have all these schools taking care of HVAC wise. See the units here, been installed, Forest Hill, we're showing there 92.3%. But Package A is completely done. Really excited to provide the HVAC upgrades to the students at these schools here listed. Package B is another HVAC project. You see the chiller replacement there at McWilly. You might only see 39.8%, but with Package B, we're right at 95%. All these schools have new equipment. The only school left we have is Callaway. The chiller's in place, it's got to get the hooked up. Contractors have crews on other sites that are taking some priority, but they are far ahead of schedule to make sure that students, scholars, staff have the HVAC needed for these schools. Package E, another project we're excited about, HVAC, New Shirley with it, Galloway, Casey. And you see there, the analysis of room temperatures. We really get into the work on all these school sites to make sure that everything's done appropriately. It's showing 35.5% there, but right at 50% according to our calculations. This project is on schedule to be done by October 25th. Package F, this project is a little bit ahead of schedule as well. You see here, the new epoxy floors in Northwest Jackson, framing for vanities. There's all done now as we stand here today. You see 68% per our calculations. Package F is at 96.7% complete due to the most recent payout. So this project is practically done and been punched out. Mur High School, windows have been replaced currently, and there's progress there with the plumbing, with some excavation work. We're going to recommend a tarmac section there, although you might see 17.4%. We're currently around 40% marked with the work being done at Mur. A lot of windows been replaced as we stand here. Likewise, at ProVon, we're sitting 18%. A lot of work with the windows, some plumbing work being done. At ProVon, we're around 45% completion. And Isabel, really impressed with the work going on there. This might show 8%, but at Isabel, we're a little bit over 10%. Some really high-quality plumbing taking place at Isabel, things from Marvel. And Powell, Phase II, 12%. We said some courtyard work being done there, roof drainage system installation is underway. We are at 12% according to that pay app. And at Powell, we are roughly around 25%. So work is going extremely well there and is on schedule. So we're proud to announce, of course, these are projects that are completely done. Wells APEC, Boyd Elementary, the restrooms, Wyndham, our new Shirley, the restroom improvements, John Hopkins, Boyd and Green, all of those windows, Part One and Part Two, McLeod, and the first set of renovations for Powell. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Board members, any questions?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, I always like to start good before I start, before I ask questions. So first, thank you guys for the projects that are on schedule. Thank you guys for the projects that are ahead of schedule. By my count, just from that, from the quick recitation, that's Cap City, Package A, Package B, Package F. We've got a bunch of them that are moving towards substantial completion on time, and that's deeply appreciated. Got, so I'm going to start with Bailey. I know that it was initially scheduled for completion. I think it was in October, something like that. And I know we had change orders that have been entered in that, on that project. What's, what's the new, what's the actual completion date that we, that we have targeted at this point?
Okay, I guess. So at our most recent OAC meeting at Bailey, the contractors are very confident that the school will be done by December. So the change order that you all approved pushed the contract out to January 3rd of 2025. However, the contracts are very confident they'll be ready, the school will be done far, far ahead of that. So they, the facilities department did a great job, and we've also echoed the importance of spending the funds with the extra deadlines to make sure that's done appropriately. But the contractors are good with December.
Okay. You've gotten to my next question, and Dr. Seback's on the phone. I don't want to steal his thunder, but I want to save him the unmuting. Are we good on spending ESTER? Um I know that it was initially scheduled for completion. I think it was in October, something like that, and I know we had change orders that have been entered in that uh on that project. What's what's the new compo- what's the actual completion date that we that we have targeted at this point?
Okay, I guess. Yeah, so at our most recent O A C meeting in Bailey, the contractors are very confident that the school will be done by December. So the change order that you all approved
Right.
pushed the contract out to January third of twenty twenty-five. However, the contracts are very confident they'll be ready, the school will be done far, far ahead of that. So they, the you know, the facilities department did a great job, and we've also echoed the importance of spending the funds with the extra deadlines to make sure that's done appropriately. Uh but the contractors are good with December.
Okay, um you've gotten to my next question, and uh Dr. Sevack's on the phone. I don't wanna steal his thunder, but I wanna save him the the unmuting. Are we good on spending ESTER funds um by the time that we need to spend them, which I think is sometime in December?
So I think this one I pass the
Pass the baton.
All right. Any more questions?
I actually do.
Okay.
If we go past the baton, let me uh let me, let me ask my other questions. So it may be, it may be interrelated, it may not be.
All right.
Um Ms. Thompson uh kinda touched on, there's at least one place where it didn't quite feel the same. And and I wanna touch on that same place because I suspect we're talking about the same thing. Um I know that the projected completion date for Powell Middle School is is sort of late December. And I know that we're sitting on a twenty-five percent sort of completion, estimated completion at this point. Is there i- is there any possibility that that project extends longer? And the reason I'm asking is because I'm interested in and would like to press for commentary on, to the extent it's appropriate, uh the possibility of moving kids from Brinkley that are Powell students that are currently housed in Brinkley while a lot of this construction is ongoing, moving them back into Powell mid-year as opposed to keeping them in Brinkley where they are right now. Um so I guess just commentary on the progress of construction and risk, you know, that we might have to eclipse that deadline.
Well, certainly we will, you know, our job is to keep, is to keep the heat on.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we we keep a full court press. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Um our job is to keep full court press, and that's what we're always gonna do. Now, of course, in any construction industry, in the industry at all, rain, equipment delivery, anything like that could possibly happen. But full court press from this team, we you you do have.
Yeah.
I will tell you that.
That's great. Um yeah, I mean, it's just one of those, that's that's sort of high on my uh concern list after seeing what I've seen, so.
And Dr. Sevack is online. He has a question before you all um pass the baton and spill. Dr. Sevack?
Hey, Mr. Thompson, thank you for flagging. I I believe uh Ms. McGuppie may have asked this, but I just wanted to, again, make sure we're on track to spend all of the federal ESTER money on that.
Great evening, board. Uh Dr. Green, Ms. Thompson and board members. Uh we are on target. Uh not, it's important to note, not only do we have these projects, but there are other activities that we have in the art budget. So we will be meeting in the next couple of me weeks as a team to assess everything, to see where we are, do revisions to ensure that we expend uh the funds as budgeted.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Thompson.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening. I'm all just combobulated. So I wanna thank Triage for their update that they have provided on the ESTER. But I do wanna flag that Powell actually has a third project. So the third project is the HVAC. So we're gonna make this a four-pipe system like we did with Jim Hill, and that is gonna take additional time. So unfortunately, we want to be able to make that transition, um and that will be um funded with limited tax notes. So uh we're gonna make sure they come into a cool environment with no leaking pipe. So we are excited to be able to um bring them back, but it won't be mid-year, unfortunately.
Yeah, it's raining on my day.
Manage expectations is what I always say, let me get ahead of it.
If I've not taught you anything else.
Yes.
Manage expectations, yes. Cause I I actually lost sight of that that other major pro- huge project that likely will not be completed until the end of the school year.
Yes, correct.
That means that we've gotta look some more at at um some temporary love for for the Brinkley Building.
Yes, we will. We're there now doing some painting, some other loving.
Temporary love.
Temporary love.
Yeah, and spacing, cause those, yeah.
The the team has been um working through that as well in in terms of who, in terms of zones and that sort of thing. Who should be at um Powell or Powell at Brinkley versus other middles? So they're working through some of the troubleshooting a bit of that as well. Yeah.
Just just to make sure I understand, you mean you're talking about whether students may be going to other middles?
Yes, as I understand it, um there are some who um registered and wanted to go to Powell
Yeah.
and are actually zoned elsewhere.
Gotcha.
And so we're working through um what that can look like. You know, after the start of the year, it's tough.
Yeah.
But, you know, this is, this is some of the work that we've had to do to help folks to embrace the change. People wanted to remain at their schools. And so this is one of the outcomes of being more flexible about those those new zones. So we're working through it.
Yeah.
Good problems.
Yeah. Oh, listen, people, and our numbers are strong, our enrollment numbers are strong. So it's that plus enrollment, and so we're not complaining about that. We're just trying to figure out how to keep everyone comfortable while they're learning. All the positive things, we don't want that eroded by, you know, folks being um discomforted in their space.
That's right.
Yeah.
Any other questions, board members? Seeing now, we will move on to our review of various policies for amendment with um our attorney, um Harris.
Good evening. Um Mrs. Thompson, board members, Superintendent Dr. Green, J P S family. The Office of the General Counsel is recommending that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees review the recommendations related to the amendment of the following policies. The first one is J K A, credit recovery. We're recommending amendment of this policy to um reflect new requirements required by the Mississippi Department of Education. J B G, district-to-district transfer. We're recommending amendment to this policy to update some terminology in the policy um as well as clarify that each transfer is is reviewed on a case-by-case basis and to um list out that district employees have the right for their child to attend school in the district. Policy G B E N, smoking tobacco products on district premises. We're recommending amendment of this policy to um update the title of the policy from school premises to all district premises as well as um we updated the word student to scholar to be consistent in all of our policies. And we also are recommending amendment of this policy to include um vaping devices and electronic cigarettes as prohibited items. And the last policy, we're recommending amendment is K J A, school volunteers. We're recommending amendment of this policy, um again, to update the word student to scholar and to reflect the change that background checks are now conducted in the Office of Human Resources instead of the Office of Campus Enforcement as well as um included provision that we require a background check for volunteers at least once every three years. Um all of these policy changes were discussed in the Policy Review Committee meeting on August the thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. The Office of Public Engagement published the recommended changes on our website under Policies Under Review um on August the fourteenth to provide the public opportunity to review our recommended changes and make any comments that they may have. As a reminder, our monthly policy committee meetings are held the second Tuesday of each month at eleven A M. And each meeting is broadcast live on our YouTube channel, J P S I T V. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members?
I just love this committee. Right up my alley.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Attorney Harris. Next, we will have um our uh information action, action items, and uh we will.
You got me again.
Yeah, I have the approval of the Legacy Scholar act, the Alex, excuse me. Approval of the Legacy Scholars Grant Agreement with Equal Justice Justice Initiative in Jackson Public Schools.
The Office of the General Counsel is recommending that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees approve the Legacy Scholars Grant Agreement between Jackson Public Schools and the Equal Justice Initiative on behalf of the Jackson Middle College. Jackson Middle College applied for and was awarded a Legacy Scholar Grants for twenty-six scholars and three chaperones to visit the Legacy Museum from enslavement to mass incarceration, the National Memorial for Peace and Justice, and the Freedom Monument Sculpture Park in Montgomery, Alabama. And those students and chaperones will be attended the museum on February the twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. The amount of the grant award is four thousand and twenty-two dollars. Are there any questions?
Question?
Wonderful program. Wonderful thing we do, I think.
Love it.
Okay, board members, um we can take all of these as a slate, so we can let them all, go through them all and take them all as a slate, so um so she can go ahead and read her next one.
All right, my next item is the um request to approve the donation of the land and property known as the Viola Lake property. So the City of Jackson is requesting that the Jackson Public School District's Board of Trustees approve the donation of the land and property known as the Viola Lake property um to us, to Kimberly Hilliard on behalf of the Center for Social Entrepreneurship. Uh as you all know, this property was granted to the district um to the City of Jackson on behalf of the Jackson Public School District for the benefit of Jackson Public Schools and to further educational opportunities. Um we entered into uh petition with the, along with the city to dissolve that trust um in twenty twenty-two. And so as a result of the order from that um dissolution of the trust, any disposition of the property must be agreed to by the Jackson Public Schools Board of Trustees. And so the city is seeking to donate the property to the Center for Social Entrepreneurship. And uh Ms. Kimberly Hilliard is here um on behalf of the Cen- Center for Social Entrepreneurship. If you all have any questions about their intent for the desired property, she's here and um ready to speak.
I do have one question. I'm assuming that we're going to tear the property down? Cause it's such a hazard, I cannot believe it's still there. It'd be so easy for some young folk to go up in there to explore and end up with their legs broken or something.
Good evening, board, um and definitely
In the mic.
Thank you. Good evening, board. We're so happy to be here today. I'm Kimberly Hilliard, President and CEO of the Center for Social Entrepreneurship. Five years ago, we had an architectural firm look at the property for restoration. Uh but unfortunately, the past three months, we had three fires um based on homeless folks living in the property. And so we're at a point of demolition. And so we're excited to re-craft what that property could be. And so we're looking at a significant um building for youth entrepreneurship and education.
Excellent. I think that's a great idea, cause it certainly needs to be demolished. It is such a hazard.
That's my opinion. Your letter date in the Novus is twenty twenty-five. You saw that?
I didn't write a letter date. Yeah, they they wrote a letter to the City of Jackson and they did misdate the letter, but yeah. My only document is Executive Summer.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, board members? All right. All right, uh next is the um approval of the agreement of the between the Mississippi School Board Association and the Jackson Public School Districts for the online agenda services.
Good evening. Uh administration is recommending the approval of an agreement between the Mississippi School Board Association and the district for um an online agenda application program. The current um Novus application is being discontinued by the company. And we looked at several uh different agenda programs, and the application O A agenda that was provided by M S B A is the best option for the district at this time, and we recommend its approval.
Any other questions?
I gotta get a new login, don't I?
Um, yes, sorry.
I just figured this one out.
Sorry, maybe this one will be single sign. We'll, I don't, I think we talked about single sign-on, but I can't remember. If it's single sign-on, I promise you, we will do it.
Two factor.
Two-factor authentication, and we're gonna get some single sign-on. If it's available, we're gonna do single sign-on for you.
If anybody can do it, she can do it.
Okay.
Okay, no other questions? We'll move on to to the approval of the renewal agreement between Mississippi Department of Health and the Jackson Public School District, uh Ms. Amanda Thomas.
Good evening, board members, Secretary Ms. Thompson, Dr. Green, J P S community and family. The administration is recommending approval of a memorandum of agreement between Jackson Public Schools District and the Mississippi Department of Health. This agreement aims to continue the established and guided relationship between the Mississippi Department of Health and Jackson Public Schools as we continue our efforts to improve children and youth health and well-being by implementing the Abstinence Plus Sex Education Program. Um the Mississippi Health, Department of Health will continue to be the um serve as the initiation um or the initiative manager funded by the Preps Grant. And um Mississippi Department of Health will provide the following resources to the district, the curriculum materials, training and support related to the Abstinence Plus Sex Education Program. Um I do want to note two key points that were asked um as we continue to educate our scholars and our parents on these preventive measures. Um the curriculum was adopted to provide students with accurate information concerning the the prevention of pregnancy and sexually transmitted transmitted infections. Also, um parents have the right to consent to or deny their child's participation in the program. And as always, for those students who do or parents that opt into that, we will provide that that information via those trained personnel, which includes counselors or um those of health P E teachers as well as school nurses.
Any question? Any, any questions, board members?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Next, we'll have the approval of the agreement between Accelerated, Accelerate Mississippi W B B Grant Subagreement and the Jackson Public School District, Mr. Schomer.
All right, good evening, Dr. Green, President Sevack, uh board members and the rest of the community here. Uh the administration recommends approval of the sub uh recipient agreement between Accelerate Mississippi and Jackson Public School District for the We Build It Better Grant. The W B B Grant from Accelerate Mississippi will provide over a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars towards the implementation of the W B B program at two middle schools, Blackburn and Kirksey, and the We Will Build It Better program at two elementary schools, Beckham Park and Span. This is a workforce development program, will provide a one-year curriculum, teacher training and required materials. Jackson Public Schools was determined to be eligible for the We Build It Better uh grant by Accelerate Mississippi. J P S is one of two districts selected for this wonderful opportunity. Uh this is a reimbursement grant. Once J P S has purchased everything and submitted an invoice to Accelerate Mississippi, J P S will be reimbursed. The total cost of the program is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Accelerate Mississippi will provide a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight ninety-seven. J P S will provide a supplement of forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to fully maximize the program's benefits, supports District Commitment One, Innovative Teaching and Learning, and Commitment Three, J P S Joy. Any questions?
Any questions, board members?
Uh, Mr. Thompson, this is uh Ed Sevack. I had uh two questions. Um the first is, uh can Mr. Schomer please share the source of the fund through this past grant? And then the second is, um I just, I I I wanted to see what we are putting in place to track outcomes associated with this investment over time.
All right, the the uh the funding source for Accelerate Mississippi for this particular program is a preparation of funds through the Mississippi State Legislature and receipt of state and federal funds. And as far as tracking of outcomes, we're in the process of developing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Sevack, just another word on uh in response to your question, um or related, I guess, to your question. We we were approached by Accelerate Mississippi um as we know um the Amazon Web Services um uh enterprise is coming um and setting up shop here in Mississippi and and of course, other related computer science um or web-based entities. And so there's a huge effort um and desire on the part of Accelerate Mississippi, our our economic development um inner entities, uh state our, our economic development, um, inter, entities, uh, state leaders, and, and of course, all of us education folks to, to do something more intentional in preparing our young people at an earlier age for, um, what will likely come in terms of the workforce. And so, um, creating more of these opportunities and, and really, in this case, some pilots uh, for these kinds of programs and moving them, uh, earlier in the scholar's education, not simply waiting until they're high schoolers and, and taking some, um, more intense coursework there. And so, um, we're, we're excited to pilot programs and, and to see what we learn from it, but also thinking about how we further, uh, expand upon, uh, computer science and, and beyond, uh, for our scholars and, and to do that earlier and earlier. So just wanted to add a bit more context.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Mrs. Schomer. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the approval of to award partial fulfillment of the RFP 2024-17 to purchase Wilson Language Classroom Materials, uh, Dr. Smith.
All right, good evening. Secretary Ms. Thompson, board members, Dr. Green, and our JPS family. The administration is requesting, um, approval to, um, purchases of renewal agreement with Wilson's Foundation. Wilson's, um, Language for Classroom Materials, it provides the, uh, foundational skills for our scholars. And so we, it's called fundations, so we, so have a little, um, go between foundations and foundations. But it's Wilson's Language Fundations Program for our foundational skills by pre-K through second grade students.
Any questions, board members? All right, next we'll have the approval of the agreement between Teach For America, Ignite Fellowship and the Jackson Public School District, uh, Dr. Cormac.
Good evening, Secretary Ms. Thompson, Dr. Green, members of the board, our JPS community. The Jackson Public School District Administration recommends the approval of the MOU between Teach For America, Ignite Fellowship, and the Jackson Public School District in support of Ignite Fellowship Partnership at Johnson Elementary School. The Teach For America, Ignite Fellowship provides small group virtual tutorial sessions with the support of a veteran educator. The Ignite Fellows are generally current college students who are also considering becoming future Teach For America core members. These fellows receive dedicated training and support. Uh, we encourage your support of this agreement.
Board members, any questions?
Just, I, I, I think I understand. I just wanted to make sure, this is, this, I have two, two questions that I think are in a related. One is, this is bringing, this is providing training to potential TFA graduates, right? The people that would go into the TFA program, is that accurate?
Yes, so Teach For America has reevaluated its recruitment model. And one of the things that they have started to do is to recruit college students, beginning in their freshman and sophomore year, who may have a future, um, as Teach For America core members. One of the ways that they can kind of expand that induction and training is through the Ignite Fellowship, where they receive, uh, training to support virtually scholars in classrooms that could be future placements. And it kind of elongates that period of time, they get exposure having worked with scholars, has a potential recruitment tool for later, uh, placement within the district or within the partner districts.
So that was my follow-on question, is this, does this, uh, well, Johnson has some, has TFA alum at there. Um, and so I'm, I'm assuming part of this from, from our end is pitching these kids can work here, not just to pick any district.
Yes. That's, that's precisely it. Um, we, we are playing the long game in terms of recruitment. So as we think about creating opportunities, there's both the immediate impact that these young people can have on our scholars and classrooms. They receive a supportive curriculum and the support of the librarian, who has been identified as the veteran educator. Um, the sessions occur in small groups, um, and it has proof of concept. Um, the students are very invested and it's part of the district's larger strategy to activate high-leverage tutoring. Um, so there's the immediate impact, but then there's also this recruitment effort that's a part of it where in, we identify promising young leaders who could be future teachers, that get exposure to current core members. And, uh, Ms. Johnson, the principal at Johnson is also a Teach For America alum. And so we benefited from the opportunity to leverage philanthropic dollars to place this pilot there. And if there is proof of concept, we would love to expand.
Awesome.
Thank you for the clarification.
Dr. Cormac, you have experience with Teach For America.
I do, yes, ma'am.
I thought I was remembering correctly.
Yes, ma'am. Teach For America plus twenty-two.
Okay.
I'm old-school TFA.
Awesome, thank you. Thank you. Uh, next we'll have the approval of the renewal agreement between American College, um, ACT and the Jackson Public School District, uh, Dr. Marshall Thomas.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um, the administration recommends the approved amendment, uh, amended agreement between ACT and JPS. Um, the board approved the AIM training on July sixteenth. And so due to time constraints, ACT was not able to hold the July twenty-ninth, thirtieth ACT Training Week scheduled. And so we are bringing back around to have those training dates rescheduled and for the terms of the agreement just to be extended through July two thousand, July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Have any questions? And this is teacher, this was ACT AIM training for our teachers in English, Math, Science, and Reading.
Okay.
Then, go to the next one. The administration recommends the approval of the agreement between Impact Asset Corporation, which is the, um, ACT as well, but they cover their district testing and Jackson Public Schools. So under the terms of this agreement, which also is a renewal, um, JPS will participate in the administration of the ACT district testing that enables our high school scholars to offer, um, an additional ACT during the regular school day. And so our district provides opportunities in grades ninth, tenth, and twelfth grades, um, for those students to, to, um, to take the ACT during the regular school day. Our eleventh graders are participating in the state ACT during the same window. And so just to give you just some numbers, um, in twenty-two, twenty-three, which was our first year of giving, um, the district ACT, we tested two thousand four hundred and eight scholars. Last year, we tested three thousand three hundred high schoolers during the regular school day, um, during the district ACT. Any questions about, um, our district ACT?
Um, just, just for the public's information, I think I know the answer to this, but, um, can you talk about why we want to give this test in ninth grade, tenth grade, eleventh grade, fourth grade? You know, I mean, it, like, it, it, a kid who was in ninth grade last year is gonna take this test conceivably four times before they leave us.
Correct.
Why?
And what we've seen, uh, is a, uh, an increase in AC testing as they become more familiar with the test and also how to take the test. So in two thousand twenty-one, Mississippi graduates taking ACT twice had an average composite score seventeen point five compared to a scholar that took it once that had a composite of fifteen point nine. And so that was just in Mississippi alone.
And, and say a little more on the importance of, or the value of the higher test scores?
Higher test scores mean more opportunities in college, more money, um, more, um, college readiness course-taking, which means that students don't have to go in and take remedial coursework, they can go directly into their major courses. Um, and, and the big thing is money. Um, there is, um, there are lots of opportunities for scholars to obtain scholarships when they have higher ACT scores. In addition, our students can take dual-credit courses in high school when they have those, when they've met those college benchmark scores.
Um, and just one other, I, I guess, point about that, that, that for people's information, just as we're kind of like, we're talking about why we do these programs, most colleges substantially all, but I, I won't, I won't say all.
Test optional.
Composite, well, they also do composite scoring, right? So.
A super score.
If you not, yeah, if you knock out the, if you knock out your math one time and then you come back and knock out the science the second time, you, you put those together, right?
You get a super score, and that is correct. Yep. Yep. Which is amazing.
It is.
Okay, we, um, next we'll have, uh, any other questions, board members, I'm sorry. Uh, we'll have the, um, Ms. Marshall Thomas, which will talk about our annual dropout prevention plan.
Okay, so go to, I'll do the grade results.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, approval of the renewal agreement between, uh, our grade results.
Yes, ma'am. Administration is recommending board approval of the online and blended learning MOU between Grade Results and, um, JPS to provide online and blended learning courses for credit recovery, first-time coursework, professional development, on-demand tutoring, live asynchronous and synchronous virtual instruction taught by a Grade Results instructor as well. Um, and we, we also use those courses in our REAP program, our Alternative School, also in our Virtual Academy, so not just our traditional comprehensive high schools, but also in our program schools. This year, um, which is also a, an additional MOU that is forthcoming, Grade Results will be offering dual-credit courses through Tugle College as a part of their comprehensive agreement, so no additional cost.
Very good.
Last year, I, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, I was just gonna share some, some data from last year. Um, so in two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, we utilized nine instructors, um, through Grade Results. And those courses ranged from Spanish one and two to physical science, algebra two, algebra three. And we had a total of eight hundred and seventy-eight courses that were taken between initial credit and, um, credit recovery. And, um, as part of the dropout prevention plan, we had a, we have a REAP drop-in program, which is targeting students ages seventeen through twenty-one that have previously dropped out of school. And we actually had fifteen scholars that actually completed, um, the Grade Results Academy program. And so they attained, um, a high school diploma.
Awesome. Very good. Any other questions, board members? Now we will have our dropout prevention.
Yes, ma'am. The administration recommends approval of the JPS Annual Dropout Prevention and Restructuring Plans for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. We'll go through, um, the PowerPoint. Our vision, of course, is to prepare scholars to achieve globally, to contribute locally, and be. There you go. This is cool, this is cool. Um, at Jackson Public Schools, we develop scholars through world-class learning experiences to attain an exceptional knowledge base, critical and relevant skill sets, and the necessary dispositions for great success. Um, these are the objectives for, um, this presentation, just to provide a brief overview of our dropout prevention plan, highlight, um, some major updates to the new plan, and also to provide a summary of key strategies, um, outlined in our schools' restructuring plans. The four commitments, innovative teaching and learning, which is critical, um, to the academic success of our scholars, talented individuals and teams, JPS joy, because we all know students that enjoy coming to school tend to do well in school. Organizational effectiveness, and lastly, um, a strong finish, which is the goal of the dropout prevention plan. And why do we have these plans? As required by state law, each school district shall implement an annual dropout prevention plan. The plan must be board-approved and posted on the district's website homepage each year. Additionally, um, each high school with a graduation rate below eighty-five percent is required to develop a graduation restructuring plan. Our district also includes the feeder elementary and middle schools in the development of those restructuring plans. Um, the dropout prevention plan, um, we have four goals that are required to have strategies for. The first goal is to reduce the retention rates in grades kindergarten, first and second. Second, um, goal, target subgroups that need additional assistance to meet graduation requirements. Third, develop dropout recovery initiatives that focus on scholars ages seventeen through twenty-one who dropped out of school. And lastly, address how scholars will transition to the homeschool district from our juvenile detention center. Some, um, data overview, we did a, a little comparative analysis of our performance from last year to our previous dropout prevention plan. And so with our chronic absenteeism rate, we did see a, an increase in chronic absenteeism from our two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three plan. Um, our rate was twenty-eight point six five, and we did increase some to thirty-two point four. Um, with discipline incidences by scholars, um, we did see a, a small increase as well from seventeen to nineteen from the previous year. We did see, um, improvements in our retention rates, and we'll talk more about that. And that's really, really important because it is a critical, a critical component in identifying students that may potentially drop out. And our average daily attendance, our ADA, um, decreased from nineteen point eight percent to ninety-one point four percent. We just received, um, some, some additional data last week from, um, from the state for chronic absenteeism. So that data is updated. Um, our average daily attendance, we just wanted to highlight, um, two of our schools that had a, had a really good, um, ADA that's Bailey and Obama, both, um, have an ADA rate above ninety-six percent. Um, we also wanted to highlight one of our schools that, um, had the lowest ADA, and that was Wingfield with a seventy-seven point eight percent. The district's overall ADA was ninety-one point four percent, and our goal for this current plan is ninety-three percent. So our goal is to go from ninety-one point, point four percent to ninety-three for next school year. Um, chronic absenteeism, our goal, um, for this year was thirty point four. We actually ended with a thirty-two point four percent, so we did not meet our goal there. And we have set our goal for next year to go from now thirty-two point four to the thirty percent, um, graduate, um, chronic absenteeism goal, I'm sorry. Schools with the highest chronic absenteeism rate are listed there. And the reason that we kind of listed them out, because as we were developing some of the restructuring plans, we wanted to make sure we had really targeted strategies to address not only the elementary and middle schools that feed into those, but also those high schools who are going to receive those, and to see if there, are there any issues that you see where you have issues in elementary, it's falling to middle, and you see those play out in high schools, and vice versa. Schools with the lowest chronic absenteeism, that's less than five percent, are listed there. Discipline, um, we had a nineteen point one percent discipline, um, rate. The schools with the highest discipline rates are listed there. And we have those with the lowest, with McWhalley, Timberline, Van Winkle, and Walton with zero discipline incidences. Retention rates, um, in our grades K through two, we exceeded our goal in our K through two, uh, retention rates. We actually, our goal was ju, was five point four percent. We actually ended with a four point four percent, um, retention rate, kudos. And our goal for next, next year is to decrease more to three point four percent, so a one percent decrease. Attendance rates, also in grades K through two, our goal was, um, ninety-three percent. We ended with ninety-two point nine, and so we're gonna say that's ninety-three as well, so we met our goal there. Our goal for next year is ninety-five percent. Kudos there. Um, graduation, um, and dropout rates, um, I have all of the, all seven high schools listed. We have decreases in our dropout, in our graduation rates for Callaway, Forest Hill, and Provine. And we have increases in our graduation rates at Lanier, Mara, and Wingfield. Jim Hill maintained its current grad rate, so it was thirty, eighty-three point one. It maintained a eighty-three point one grad rate. Our dropout rate, um, we saw a slight increase from fourteen point one percent to fourteen point six percent. Our dropout rate, um, we saw a slight increase from fourteen point one percent to fourteen point six percent. Subgroup grad rate data here, um, increases in our male populations. Our male grad rate, like, the previous year was seventy-nine point one, we increased slightly to eighty point eight. Our Hispanic population, um, we saw a slight increase there from sixty-eight point eight to sixty-nine point two. And we saw some significant declines in our grad rate in these three populations. Our homeless scholars, our grad rate, um, from forty-seven point five to twenty-seven percent. EL populations from sixty-three to forty-seven point eight, and our white population sixty-three point two to forty-six point two. These are the four schools that are required to have restructuring plans based on the less, the graduation rate lowered in eighty-five percent. Callaway, Forest Hill, Jim Hill, and Provine, with Lanier and Mara not having to have, um, a restructuring plan because they were above the eighty-five percent grad rate. Here we have, um, key shifts in, um, in the plans. So as a, as a feeder pattern, these were the key, um, shifts that, that you'll see in their plans. Callaway, um, has a STEM academy. So what you'll see from elementary, middle, and high schools, there are a really strong focus on STEM, um, programs. That's exposure to STEM programs, um, their STEM academy. So hopefully those students that are moving from North Jackson to Kersey to Callaway will, will stay and, and complete their IT program, which is the information technology pathway they have. Forest Hill, I'm sorry, Forest Hill, um, the introduction of the arts-based learning program there. And also they are working on more community involvement projects. That's bringing students into, um, bringing community members into the schools, and also making sure that students are involved in community, um, activities outside of the school. And also enhance counseling services to address scholars with, um, any mil, mental health challenges. They have added an additional, um, counselor that, that focuses simply on, um, mental health, um, activities weekly. Jim Hill, an emphasis on college readiness programs, and they are expanding their AP courses. And this is particularly for students that are not in IB. Oftentimes, those students are not taking those rigorous courses because they're not in IB. So what they've done is making sure that, that all scholars, whether they're IB or non-IB, are having those, um, rigorous courses. Provine, development of career and tech ed pathways and, um, a mentorship program. They too, um, have a career academy at their school. In conclusion, I won't read that to you, but I would like you to read our, our statement. Are there any questions? And there were some, um, before you, if, if you have any questions, I may address them, um, in the responses from, um, Dr. Sevak, or was it you, Mr. McGuffey, who sent some questions?
Not me.
Okay. Um, they wanted to kind of look at what were some of the reasons that, um, the schools that had high ADAs, what do you, what do we contribute or attribute some of those, um, rates to? And so what we shared was that in elementary, that students, parents that have work schedule, challenges with work schedules often have issues with transportation if the scholar is, you know, not picked up from s, school on time or late buses running, so sometimes those are barriers. Instabilities at the home, whether it's family conflicts, homelessness, um, oftentimes the need for the older sibling to stay home to keep the younger sibling, those are some things that some of those schools, um, pointed out were issues with, um, with their ADA. Middle and high school, we, we submitted, uh, a combined response, and, and we also saw some of those. Transportation, um, buses may not arrive on time, and sometimes those scholars may go back home, and parents are at work and, and can't come and take those students to school. We also talked about inaccurate attendance reporting, so that's one thing that we are really working on, is having really strong procedures for catching students that are coming to school tardy in the morning, whether it's, you know, their own or, or, or not their own fault. Early dismissals, so because we have the sixty-three percent attendance rule, any, when students get early dismissals, whether they're at school, if they're not at school for sixty-three percent of the instructional day, those students are marked, um, absent. Also, students face housing instabilities, lack of access to healthcare, financial pressures. That's, you know, having the, the designer clothes, designer shoes that some of their classmates may have. Um, students have shared that was with us as well. Um, some high school students work part-time jobs and that, um, to help support their families. And as a result, that interferes with them coming to school. We, we talked about strategies to, uh, address chronic absenteeism across the board. And so I'll just give the highlights of those in the response, I did give some more details. But we talked about strong school leadership, a positive school culture and climate, engaging curriculum and instruction, strong relationships with families and communities, access to support services, attendance incentive programs, transportation solutions, and tailored interventions for at-risk scholars. So those are, um, some of the high points that, um, that we have included in the plan, and, and we shared those in that response. Have any additional questions?
Um, Ms. Thompson, this is Ed Sevak again, I do have one question, and, um, this may be more directed towards Dr. Green. Um, one of the items that was located across all three levels of, of school, elementary, middle, and high school, when looking at factors affecting ADA, a, a common theme is transportation. And I know you're very well aware of the transportation issue, um, uh, but I also want to make sure that, that we have a conversation around it. It's, it's also to the community areas that the board is aware of it, and now excited as an issue that's affecting our dropout prevention. And so what, what more, uh, can we do as a board to support the administration on, on addressing transportation issues, which has now been cited as affecting, uh, attendance, uh, in our schools?
Uh, I, I appreciate the question, Dr. Sevak. So I, I understand this issue related to transportation is kind of multi-pronged. So it's, it's, um, you know, there are cases where transportation completely fails. But, but more often than not, far more often than not, the situation is, transportation is late. Um, and, and that in and of itself is frustrating, frustrating for the pickup, frustrating for dropping off in the afternoon. And, you know, folks may just not want to deal with it, et cetera. But more times than not, it's a question of, or an issue of, transportation being late. And so that for sure impacts whether folks even want to deal with our transportation system. There's also, though, this issue of record-keeping, and where scholars arrive late and the record, you know, th, they've already taken role, taken attendance, and the records are not quickly, um, and regularly updated uh, to catch those scholars who are arriving after role has been taken. Um, and then, of course, there's skipping and all that other stuff that can impact daily and, and, um, class-by-class role-taking, so, so all of that. Um, the, you, the board has already improved, helped us, and approved, uh, um, increases to salaries for bus drivers. That is, that has, and I believe will continue to have a huge impact on our ability to staff our transportation system, uh, to have the, the personnel that we need to run those routes regularly and not have to have the, you know, well, when folks are out sick or, or where we have vacancies or what have you, having the remaining drivers double back and pick up additional routes that makes their travel time longer, it wears the buses out, our scholars are on buses much longer. Um, they are arriving later and getting picked up later, and there's a domino effect after picking up and dropping off elementary, picking up and dropping off middle, and then picking up and dropping off high school. Not to mention all our special programs throughout the day where there's, um, transportation happening and, um, extra co-curricular activities in the evenings after, uh, scholars are, are dropped off. So the, the system is strained, but with, um, increased pay, we can attract, um, and hopefully retain more of our, our drivers to help with that. Um, at this point, as I understand it, it's not a question of buses, having enough buses. It, it is having enough drivers, and not just enough for the routes, but enough for redundancies when people are out sick or with whatever issues, uh, they might have. So there's that. Um, we're also continuing to look at additional resources to, um, to augment our transportation system, whether it's, um, to take on some of the additional routes for field trips, and I didn't mention that earl, earlier, but that's another one. Field trips and co-curricular activities, or to support us with maybe the middle school routes. And we continue to do the elementary and, and high school. Um, you know, we don't anticipate any issues with, you know, closing positions that, that we have. But because of the turnover that we see every year, because of the difficulty in finding the labor, because of, because, 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 um, you know, those are some of the things that are, that are just bubbling up and having this outsized impact across the district, not the least of which on attendance, daily attendance. Um, we're likely, we'll, we'll definitely continue to monitor, um, pay for our drivers and the impact that that has, uh, on our ability to, uh, recruit and, and retain them. And for sure, uh, our team has already been and will continue to, uh, explore opportunities for outsourcing any portion of, uh, transportation just to make sure that that's not, um, an issue in the ways, in the way that it has been in the past. I should say, though, um, even with some of the challenges we've had at the start of the year, um, w, we are in a better place than we've been for several years with transportation. Um, there's still some pain points, but, but we're, we're already in a better place, so, um, we're hopeful that, that will continue. Um, outside of that, I'm, I'm honestly not sure. Uh, part of our, our big work right now is just understanding where there are resources that we can bring to bear on this trans, transportation issue. And by that, I'm meaning, um, entities that can, um, that, to whom we can, can outsource some of the transportation support.
Great, thank, thank you for that update, Dr. Green.
Yes, sir.
Got a kind of a follow-on, um, I, I, this is a, this is truly springing something that, that I, I don't know if that, if it has been considered, has been considered and discarded, or, uh, could be considered. But, um, I'm aware of other, particularly in other urban metro area school districts outside the state of Mississippi, I'm not su, not aware of this working inside the state of Mississippi up to this point. But have we explored ride-share, uh, connected with the schools?
Um, with the city transport, the bus transportation?
Not J-tran, not, not the city, I'm talking about, there are, um, I know that there are organizations that vet drivers, uh, that essentially operate like Uber, that they vet drivers, they have to go through extensive background checking and things like that. Uh, I'm not aware of that happening anywhere in the state of Mississippi, but I know that Houston has used it, I know that Seattle has used that as ways to alleviate some of the stress to the transportation system. I don't know if we've looked into that, but maybe we could.
Um, we'll, we'll take it up and explore it. I, I will tell you, just through my own personal use and having, um, our vendors, partners who have traveled here and, and, and other folks, um, the ride-share capacity in, in Jackson seems to be.
Very low.
Yeah. Far less than some of the, um, more robust, um, areas. But, but it's something for us to consider. We, we're open to, and we know we've got to keep looking for, because I don't, I don't know how long we can, we can maintain our, um, internal transportation system, uh, for all of our transportation needs.
Right.
Uh, but we have, and I, I thought you were leaning towards or, or going to, uh, ask about the, uh, city, uh, J-tran, uh, system, and that has been a conversation. Um, we, the, you know, we've got to make sure that the routes are robust enough to get our scholars. And then do the work to, with parents and scholars to see if that's something that folks are willing to do.
Ms. Marshall Thomas, I've got one other, um, question, and I, I think it was touched on in some of the, in, in part of the overview, especially for the four, uh, for the four high schools in particular. But, um, can you talk about how we've, how we're looking to push? One of the goals in our strategic plan is an increase in co-curricular activity. And where, you know, my understanding is that we see close tie-outs and reductions in everything. You know, reductions in all the bad disciplinary, uh, disciplinary issues, uh, uh, chronic absenteeism, and increases in all the good, whether it's grad rates or all those things. And so I'm just wondering, um, how that fits in at, at sort of all four locations? If they have, if, if those high schools, or if we've sort of collectively given thought to how to ramp that up and how to encourage kids into those? And then also, um, you know, how to tie together some of the things, some of the threads that we're hearing tonight. You know, we've got this incredible culinary program, we've got a, lo and behold, we have a culinary arts program at CDC and places like that. There's, um, I, I know that one of the schools, I think it was Provine, but I can't remember now that I'm not looking at it, mentioned CTE in particular. Um, how do we, I don't know, what, what are the thoughts about that? And, and incorporating that into all four, um, schools?
That is definitely something that we will consider, it's not something that, um, I've seen just really explicitly spelled out in their restructuring plans about, um, to, to tie to the goal. But as we are working through, um, that key initiative, or that, that commitment, we are, um, working with our athletics department, we are working with, to, to ensure that we have the offerings so that students can, um, actually participate in, in activities that we don't normally have, sports we don't normally have. But not just the, the sports, you know, what are, what are some of the non-traditional, um, activities that students can participate in? The EA Sports is one, for example, that one of our schools added last year, that we're looking to expand to all, um, all six of the high schools. Also, other types of, um, organizations that students can, whether it's a book club, whether it's archery that we, that we have, um, starting at our ELC. And so as we ex, extend, um, additional opportunities, they will come. And so first, you know, that, that's our first step, is, is making sure that we have those opportunities for the students to participate. And so working with athletics, working with the principals to develop those opportunities first. And then, um, we will open those up to, to our scholars. And, and we've already started a lot of the programs, but, you know, fifty percent of year at a school with twelve hundred students, we're talking twelve hundred students, you're talking about six hundred students that need to, to be into a program, you have to have those available.
And I'm encouraged to hear, I just want to sort of flag, I know one of the other things that we had, that we had listed, um, multiple of those schools have academies that are already established there. Um, and so just increasing, increasing the bodies in the room, right?
Dr. Green, he, he visited, um, our Career Development Center today, and what he saw was students in our non-trad or our non-traditional programs, he saw girls in welding, he saw girls in automotive.
Yes.
You know, and so those are opportunities, not, you know, traditionally has been just for, you know, our males. But now the students are, the girls are finding their way into those types of programs. And also our males are finding their way into programs that are traditionally occupied by girls. Um, childcare, for example, we have males now in our childcare program, we've not seen much of that.
That's awesome.
Oh, that's very good news.
I missed that visit. And, and speaking of that visit, I, I did want to do that visit, and I missed it, so I'll have to catch it on the, another ground.
We'll be right back.
Is there a visit scheduled for Capital City?
We went today.
The two that you desperately wanted to see, we went today. We'll go back.
We would definitely go back.
Let me. Let me, let me know when y'all are going back. Capital City and Career Development.
Just schedule it with you.
Okay, please.
You know, anyone can go, but we'll just reschedule it around your schedule.
I want to go. I missed it, I did. And I saw them at...
The Road to 60.
The Road to 60, oh my God. And I sat at the table with them at The Road to 60, and amazing children. The whole school from Capital City was there, and just amazing students already. I mean, this is what I'm trying to say, like, school has just started, and these children are like, already, like, I'm just like, you're at Capital City? You know? And they were representing very well, very well, you know, but they were like from, I was asking them from their home schools and, you know, things like that, and I don't know what they did to get there, but whatever they did, I know that when they get back to their home schools, they will be better students. And Ms. Mason is doing an amazing job, Mr. Briggs, all the people, all, everyone I met, all the staff, all of them doing a great job. That's all I can say.
I'll be sure to care of the message.
Any other questions, board members? All right, we'll move on. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And next we'll have our approval of preliminary monthly financial report for the month ended July. Ms. Purnell.
Good evening. Board Secretary, Ms. Thompson, Vice President, Dr. Seback on the line, Assistant Director, Dr. Green, my JPS colleagues, the JPS team and family. On behalf of the Office of Finance and Operations, the Business Services Department, we are asking the administration, we are recommending the administration to do the approval of the preliminary monthly financial report for July 31, 2024. The preliminary monthly financial report includes, of course, the statement of fund balance, the budget status report, the bank reconciliation, and the cash flow report as well. A few highlights from the statement of fund balance. On the general funds, our preliminary numbers, let's remember, these are preliminary, we have not closed yet, our anticipated date of trying to work on closing is August 31. We're trying to finish that up, get that done, so we can get our FETS report completed and be able to come back to the board in February and then September to submit our final amended budgets.
FETS?
FETS, yes. Oh, the federal exchange transaction system report with MDE. And that is due October 15th, so we have to come back to the board with amended budget prior to that. Our preliminary beginning fund balance was about $16 million, preliminary, for July. So far, we're at $19.5 million is our fund balance, which is about $3.3 million lower than where it was last year this time, but of course, that was at closeout, and we're not at closeout. Our revenues exceed expenditures by roughly about $3.5 million. Sixth section at this point, our fund balance is about 7% of the budget, we've got about $74,000 there. Under the special revenue funds, the child nutrition is always working pretty good, and in our support of our cafeterias is roughly about $13 million, strong as always. Our special revenue funds, which shows a negative balance due to the timing, of course, of the drawdowns, is roughly about $8.8 million. We have made our request for the drawdowns for this month, as of August 12, and we requested roughly about $8.2 million that should come in at the end of this month. On the budget status, as of August 31, 2024, our district maintenance, of course, our budget is $231 million. Of that, we've collected $10.9 million, which is about 4.7% of the budget. For expenditures, we have spent $7.4 million of the budget of that, so our collected versus expended, as I requested, as I stated earlier, was about $3.5 million over there. All other funds, we have about $175 million in anticipated revenue, we collected 1.8 anticipated expenditures, we have spent about 9.9, and there we have a little deficit, but of course, board members, if you may recall, even though we have all other funds, those expenditures, and you have revenue that has already been on board prior, so the expenditures would be greater on the other side. Also, on our bank reconciliation report, all of our accounts, bank accounts are with board-approved depositories. The, all the bank statements have been reconciled as of June 30, 2024. Cash flow there for our district maintenance fund, our ending cash balance was roughly about $7.4 million compared to last year's about 2.7. That's about a $4.7 million increase from our prior year's position that we had there. One note I'll make on that is the fact that this year, we have one, we have, I guess, an anomaly of revenue that we received, and we only receive it once a year, and that's going to be for the month of July, and that's when the Department of Education did the PERS increase for us this year, along with our health insurance increase. And that was roughly about a million dollars there that we normally do not receive and that we did not get, and you will also see that in the other indicator on that report as well, which is notated there. And going into the other key performance indicators, overall revenue collected is about 51% greater than what it was last year, 51% greater than what it was last year. Expenditures, 3.41% greater than last year. Averaging collection is roughly about the same. Personnel is about 17,000 more than it was last year on that. Are there any questions?
Any questions, board members?
But of course, and I want to keep reiterating, that we budgeted much more for personnel this year to include our raises for teachers and classified team members.
We have.
So yes, it's more, but we budgeted this.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Purnell.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we will take all of these up right now. Do I have a motion to take all of action items A through L for a vote?
I move.
So moved.
Okay, second.
All right, we have a motion and second, that we take action items A through L. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? So moved. No, the motion is carried. Now we will move on to consent agenda items general, right? Finance. Consent agenda, consent agenda items finance. And the board has previously reviewed all of the consent agenda items finance, and we've had the opportunity to ask the administration any questions. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items finance?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Being none, the motion is approved. And next we'll have the consent agenda items general. The board has previously reviewed the consent agenda items, and we have had the opportunity to ask the administration any questions. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, there's a motion, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items general?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any nays? Being none, the motion is approved. Next we'll have the consent agenda items personnel. All the consent agenda items personnel have been reviewed by the board previously, and we've had the opportunity to ask the administration any questions. Are there any further questions? And seeing none, if board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items personnel?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Being none, the motion is approved. And next, do we have consideration for executive session?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
She's about to run.
No, ma'am.
I think Dr. Seback had something before we adjourn, a comment before we adjourn.
Say that again, Ms. Thompson?
Had a comment before we adjourn today?
Did I hear correctly that there will be no executive session?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, I did not know that. No, I'm good. I have no comments to make.
Okay, all right. And so since there is no executive session, then is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. We are adjourned.